Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us. The time is now 5:31, and I will be calling this meeting to order. It was duly posted as required by law, and we are going to start now with the invocation. Heavenly Father, we invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have difference of opinions, give us unity of spirit. Help us to teach. Help us to each listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote individual agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together in our shared mission. Amen.
Pledge allegiance. To the right of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
Mark, can you go for the conflict of interest?
Yes, ma'am. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion or vote on the agenda item. Are there any conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
I will abstain on 3J and 13A agenda items.
I'll be abstaining from 3D and 11.
Commissioner Mesmer?
No.
Thank you. We are all here, ladies and gentlemen, but Commissioner Mesmer is on Zoom. If you can't see him, but he's there.
The answer is no.
None.
Wonderful, thank you. One second.
Excuse me, ma'am. If Commissioner Mesmer is going to appear by video, he should be visible on the feed.
Okay.
I'm here.
If you can just keep your...
We need to be able to see you.
There, thank you. And Commissioner Bettes, just a reminder that on executive session, there is the resource officers MOU.
Oh, I didn't see that, yes.
If there's any conflict.
Yes, I want to abstain from number 14 and 13.
Okay, B, correct?
Yes, let's go, district.
Thank you. All right. And moving on now to citizen communication. Amanda?
Yes, we have three mayor. The first one is Mrs. Jo Ray Wagner in regards to state.
Mayor, I'll just hold that in case I have a quick delay.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, we have two more, ma'am. So then we have, the next one is Raymond Reyes, 706 Nantucket Drive and City Infrastructure.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. Raymond Reyes, 706 Nantucket Drive. I guess there's a lot of back and forth about a lot of different things going on currently with the city, but I was barely catching up. Had a lot of stuff going on today. Wasn't here in Alamo County, dealing with some stuff over there. But I was going through my page and noticed some things that were posted about. Apparently, there was a long food line today for the citizens of Harlingen. The food bank was out here distributing some food. Apparently, it was, I guess, almost a mile long. There's also some issues with some funding either being redirected to other entities that probably might actually need the funding, but I think one thing that is always in desperate need, and I know because I'm on Jackson Street, is dealing with the flooding situation. It's a constant thing every time we have that hundred-year storm that seemed to have hit us two years in a row. So I didn't believe in that hundred years, but Mother Nature is going to do what she does. I've always wondered, being an analyst myself in the IT field, military and stuff, that maybe if we had some software that could be provided to the engineers so they can predict, look at our current drainage, and simulate what the effects would be on a deluge of that nature, so we would know what areas need to be addressed right away again. That's just something that I thought of on my own. But as I've always stated, it's always a work in progress. I would just like to make sure that everything's considered before some of these decisions are made, because sometimes some voices, for whatever reason, don't like to come out and speak, so that leaves it up to other individuals to come out and kind of lay the groundwork and, I guess, give an opinion of what should be addressed. Other things, in some instances, it may seem like opinions or stuff has already been set in place to, the decision has been made without involving the citizens, that everybody's representing up here before me, which is not always the best way to play it. But again, I'm not too familiar with the policies and the rules and the laws that govern this great state of ours and the city in general. I just try to do the best I can and always make sure that I'm up here to voice my concern for the ones who can't or won't. So I think, again, moving forward, we have a lot of opportunities to do a lot of good things, and as long as we don't throw that to the side for personal interests or vendettas or whatever the case may be, and work for everybody's benefit, it'll be a plus for everybody. And thank you for your time. You all have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Desi Martinez, 1806 Havreford Boulevard, budget.
1806 Havreford, Desi Martinez. I'm not here to talk about my Medicare and how it relates to one of the items. I think we've done that, and I hope that you vote wisely, because there's other platforms where it takes this debate vote, and we're grownups. We need to do what's right, that's all. I'm here on this one, a water bill, sewer bill. A few weeks ago, I was floored to hear that our water, Harlingen Water Works has a major need, infrastructure, as well as drainage, water and sewer, and that there's going to be a study done on raising rates. The way it works as an economist, we work on land, everything underground, buildings, industries, et cetera, human capital. We need to work with Harlingen Water Works. I send you all a very simple detail that I also put in the newspaper, because it's important that you, our leadership, you're the only elected board. There's only one charter. They're appointed. They need help, because if you don't, the rates are going to go real high at 177 millions of, infrastructure needs to be done in the next five years. Then you figure the numbers, divide it into the number of residents we have according to U.S. Census. It's pretty high. So all I'm asking is that, read this, I brought you the information about, I sent you the information the last time, on our population growth according to this coast. It's not happening as fast to keep up with the cost of operating our underground infrastructure, water, sewer, and of course drainage to keep it out of our homes and businesses. So EDC 4A and 4B, and I gave you a description where to, how to work that, but it's, they still work separately, and it's only two individuals around it, and they still don't have a proper way of doing business. All I'm asking is, please, act appropriately now and start, you mentioned the word in our prayer, team. Team, mayor. That is our team. The Harlingen Water Works has two supervisors who know everything. They're great, great guys. They know everything about every problem, every manhole, every pipe, the plant, et cetera. Talk to them, take a tour with them, and find out how we're going to, I'm just warning you of the railroad...
Three minutes are up.
...of the train that's coming and turns up costs. We need to work smart now and use what I provide you, information, to work as a team. And there's some of us that are pretty smart out there in the community, can help in the stadium, I mean, as bystanders, help you with that teamwork, including asking our attorney on certain strategies that we can do to reduce the cost of future water and sewer, and of course drainage problems that we have. But water and sewer are vital to our economy and vital to our homes and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
The next one is Robert Lefwitch, 909 East Parkwood Street, and he wants to talk about million-dollar tax increase.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Mayor. I just wanted to say Robert Lefwitch, District 2, 3. Recently, I had the privilege of attending the Texas Economic Development Sales Tax Workshop. I think Daniel and Mayor, you as well, were there in attendance, and I have some good news from that, and I think that you guys can change direction and your mindsets based on the information that was given. And we had the, you know, we had the luxury of listening to the state comptrollers, economic development analysis, and Texas comptrollers of Public Accounts, Russell Galligan. And we also had the legal general counsel, State Commission on Judicial Contact, Zindiya Thomas. One of the things that they pointed out was, they went over the local government code as y'all were there, and they talked about what you could do with 4B money. Well, right now, the 4B is oscillated for parks, and if you look at some of the things that you can do with 4B money, and specifically, the ones that don't require or create primary jobs, which means you don't have to spend that money to where it creates a job or retains a job, it can be used pretty, in such flexibility that you can offset some of the other expenses in your budget with the sales tax money. Now, if we had the choice, as we saw at the last budget hearing, of what was essential and was the formation of this million-dollar tax increase, we saw a list of essentials. First of all, I did have a little problem with one-time purchase of a half-million-dollar drainage truck when it's a perpetual tax. I mean, you've got a one-time expense, and maybe you buy another one the next year. The fact is that the tax that you're raising is perpetual. It's not a one-time deal. So I disagree with budgeting one-time expenses and justifying a perpetual tax with that. Now, going back to the 4B, we know that drainage is more essential than parks. We also know that there's parks grants out there that have been used for the hiking bike trail. Why aren't we seeing drainage as part of the 4B budget for this next coming year? Why couldn't that be used to offset some of the tax increase? We heard about the long lines at the food distribution that the city put on today. The city's not the only one doing food distribution within the city of Harlingen. The pantry does as well. They do it weekly. And if you drive down Harrison, you'll see that there's, the block is encircled with people that are looking for handouts for food, because the inflation is affecting everybody. So let's go back and let's do some things that make sense. Let's prioritize this economic development corporation money, spend it on things that are essential, and let's look for grants and other leveraging opportunities to finance our parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lefwitch.
Okay, so next one is Jack Brogdon, and he would like to be called, and it's increase in taxes.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Brogdon. This is Amanda Lisondo. You signed up for citizens communication. You have three minutes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, you may start right now.
Hello, my name is Jack Brogdon. I live at 4613 Military Way in Harlingen. I live in District 3. I have 20 years of managing a multimillion-dollar budget. I would like to discuss about the notice of public hearing on the proposed tax increase. If you take a look at the organizational tree of the city budget, the top of the organizational tree is the citizens. We are the ones that have voted for each Commissioner and Mayor that is here. Many citizens were here in person and on the phone and spoke out against the increase in tax levied monies. The mayor and commissioners are public servants and represent the city, citizens, not the city of Harlingen and its administration. I want to remind you that the only reason why the tax rate decreased 2.2% is because the tax rate would have been over the voter-approved amount. The current rate, current tax rate that you're proposing is the maximum amount that goes, does not go to the voters. Most of the commissioners and the mayor are following the guidance of the city commissioner, city manager. 4B money can be used on drainage, which is more essential than, one minute, which is more essential than spending money on parks. Why are we spending monies on parks? Why are we spending monies on parks and not trying to obtain grant monies? The 4B monies could be used to purchase the Vactor truck, which is 500,000, since it would be improved drainage. Why, why did the old Vactor truck go out? Why was it not properly maintenance to keep up? The problem here is that the administration of the city of Harlingen is not adaptive and doesn't think outside the box, and the mayor and the city commissioners lack the experience and understanding large budgets, cost of expenses and income. Why didn't the city manager go out to the police chief and find out if we can look at more economical police vehicles? Then that will cost more, will cost, that will be reduced cost. The current vehicles that are being asked cost more in gas usage, tires and maintenance. Understand that the city wants to increase their wages for employees, but sometimes the reality is, we have to be resourceful on spending. Why are we not trying to think outside the box and try to like a scale for raises such as 50,000 to 75,000, employees receive 1%. 30,000 to 49,000, employees receive 2%. 29,000 and below receive 3%. Each commissioner has not done their...
Three minutes are up.
...and due diligence, asking the right questions, but just being led around by the city and told, no, they can't do this, or because the same we always have done. I'm asking that you find common ground between the proposed tax rate and no new tax rate. I'm asking that the no new tax rate be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brogdon.
That's it?
Okay, thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome.
Item number one is presentation of proclamations, and the first one is for Fire Prevention Week.
Oh, lovely, let's go over here. How about here? I love it. You want to be up here? Don't fall. We have a lot of head in here. Before we do, let me go ahead and present this. All right, maybe you should. Okay, so whereas the city of Harlingen is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in, living and visiting Harlingen, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. Homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires caused 2,580 civilian deaths in the United States in 2020. According to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the U.S. responded to 356,500 home fires, and whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely, and working smoke alarms pose the risk of dying in recorded home fires in half. And whereas Harlingen residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the smoke alarms and knows how to respond, and have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan, are more prepared and will, and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Harlingen residents will make sure their foot and carbon dioxide alarms meet the needs of all of their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities, and whereas Harlingen first responders are dedicated to reducing the burden of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Harlingen residents that follow six or public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety in fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week, Fire Won't Wait, Pioneer Estate, effectively serves to remind us it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Therefore, I enunciate, Mayor of Harlingen, to hereby proclaim October 9 through the 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and I urge all the people of Harlingen to plan and practice a home fire escape plan for Fire Prevention Week 2022, and support with any public activity and efforts of Harlingen Fire and Emergency Services. All right, here we go. Three, two, one. One more time. Three, two, one. Perfect. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for all you do for the city of Harlingen. So next, we have honoring all teachers. And so this is a special proclamation, and because the citizens of Harlingen have elected a teacher to the commission, I'm going to present this to Commissioner Bettes.
Do I get a cake too?
So for those of you that don't know, Commissioner's position is a non-paid position, but they can get maybe $100 a month. $92 a month. And Commissioner Bettes allows the teachers all throughout the city of Harlingen and all across the country to work tirelessly, even though they work hours of nine for eight to 3:30, eight to four. They work before school, after school, during the summer, on weekends, and they're constantly working to do better for all of our children. So we are eternally grateful for all the teachers, because without teachers, none of us in this room would be here today in the positions that we have. So we wanted to honor teachers, and who better than Commissioner Bettes, right? So whereas the city of Harlingen's future strength depends on providing a high-quality education to all students, and whereas teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students, and whereas our Harlingen Independent School District teachers have demonstrated great resilience, adaptability, and creativity during the COVID-19 crisis, and whereas our community recognizes and supports the teachers' education and children of this community, and whereas teachers can, in statewide movement, support by more than 125 partnering businesses and organizations committed to updating the teacher profession and honoring a critical role teachers play in this sector of Texas. And now therefore, I enunciate, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, to hereby call upon all Harlingen citizens who serve that the Harlingen City Commission joins hashtag Teachers Day and is partnering entities across Texas in celebrating World Teachers Day, and proclaims October 5th, 2022, to be Harlingen Teacher Day. And he didn't know about this, so that's why he's proud.
And he can't take it, and you can't take it home and keep it.
We're going to have to get a northern, or a Harlingen next.
Okay, moving on to item number two, approval of minutes. Do we have any corrections or amendments to the minutes?
Yes, on, give me a moment. On 2A, specifically page two of the minutes of the 7, 2022, the July 20th, 2022, consent agenda items C, I guess there's A, A, B, and C. Abstain on that one. I remember Mark and I had that whole conversation. I'd like that abstention noted. We subsequently ended up tabling that for like another day, because we didn't have enough commissioners. That's when Commissioner Bettes was the pro tempus.
Thank you, sir.
And I was not in attendance at that meeting either.
So do we have a motion to approve those minutes subject to those corrections?
Motion. Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. On, now we have the consent agenda, items 3A through O. Do we have any?
Yes, excuse me, Mayor. On 3A, I would like to pull that, and I have a question or two on that one, if at all possible. So I'd like to make a motion to pull that and discuss that afterwards, after the consent agenda.
Okay. Do we have any other?
On 3D, just note my abstention, please.
Right.
Same thing on 3J for me.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with withdrawing item A and notating Commissioner Lopez abstaining D and Commissioner Kinsley abstaining from J?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion, motion carries. Item, Commissioner Mesmer, if you can just, if we can see you on your camera, thank you, sir.
Can I, my camera off the Bodot?
I know, but per legal counsel, we need to have your, we need to see you in the camera throughout the meeting.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, so 3A, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution adopting the Harlingen Community Improvement Board budget for fiscal year 2023.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. This Monday, the Harlingen Community Improvement Board met to approve the proposed budget, and so we are bringing it to the city commission for your approval. The total revenues are $2,019,707, and total expenditures are $9,719,84.
A and notating Commissioner Lopez abstaining D and Commissioner Kinsley abstaining from J?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion, motion carries. Item, Commissioner Mesmer, if you can just, if we can see you on your camera, thank you, sir.
Can I, my camera off the Bodot.
I know, but per legal counsel, we need to have your, we need to see you in the camera throughout the meeting.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, so, three A, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution adopting the Harlingen Community Improvement Board budget for fiscal year 2023.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. This Monday, the Harlingen Community Improvement Board met to approve the proposed budget, and so we are bringing it to the City Commission for your approval. The total revenues are $2,019,707, and total expenditures are $9,719,84.
Okay, here's a, and I do realize that Mr. Leffwich and Mr. Brogden stole my thunder, but why don't we have any EDCB board funds applied to any flooding issues that we have in this area? Because, let's face it, the destination park area, that floods all the time. And we just can't go ahead and just, go ahead and put a trail and do the work that was, that's being asked, if it's already gonna be flooded before we ever start it, it's gonna get worse. So can we get some cooperation here and, and set those aside? I do realize the golf course is on here, but I happen to attend, I assume luck, they're only gonna use 300,000 for a water pump. So everything else is set aside for another day.
Right. So that's a decision that's made collectively with the, with the four B. I only bring the numbers that are related to those projects.
Commissioner, I think staff is gonna go out for bids at the start of next year, so hopefully there'll be a bid that'll come in within that particular budget to award a contract.
For which portion?
For the golf course.
Okay. I do realize the golf course is kinda set aside.
Yeah.
All right, that's gonna be, but the, the project for the destination park phase two, the trails and other, destination park unassigned, you're looking at 4.1 million right off the bat. And that's the area that floods quite a bit. That's right along the police station, Fair Park Boulevard. Shouldn't that be addressed more so than, than increasing our?
Well, the, the four B board would have to approve that first before it comes to the commission for final approval.
And Commissioner Morales, if I may, I know that I was in attendance at that meeting on Monday, as were you, and I know the board voted, and you were present and, and didn't provide any of these contributions to the board. I think Robert here would not be able to, to make those decisions, but surely the board would. And there was no discussion, if I recall, on that day.
I, yes, I didn't say a word, okay? But when I attend these meetings, like the EDC board meeting and the airport meeting yesterday, last night, I basically stand in the background and I listen. I don't contribute and try, if there is, happens to be a quorum, I don't participate. Whether there is a quorum or isn't, I just stay out of the conversation. Okay? That's the way I feel. Now, if I'm wrong, please correct me.
I would argue that that would have been the time and place because there was plenty of discussion, as Gabe was there as well, and the whole board, so that way they have the opportunity, because they're not here to be able to discuss that. And being on the consent agenda, they're not here to discuss, and it would have been a good conversation to have at that point. It just seems it's a little late now.
I understand. Now, one thing I did not expect is for this to be on the, on the agenda today, since it was there on Monday.
Well, and that is exactly what they said at the meeting on Monday, that it would be on the consent agenda for today for the commission to, was it, what did they say? Confirm or?
Right, to approve the budget for 2023.
So we were put on notice on Monday, and today, here we are, Wednesday, and those, those discussions could have been had on Monday, and unfortunately, now we're here.
Mayor, if I could, if I could add to that very briefly, this is simply a budget for the following fiscal year. As projects come up during this fiscal year, Commissioner, and, and they are appropriate projects which are appropriate for the four B to fund, the four B board can consider those projects at that time, right? But the, the decision in terms of which project to fund belonged to your Economic Development Corporation, and then, of course, the city always has the veto. The city can always say, no, we're not gonna approve that expenditure. But the mere fact that it's in the budget doesn't mean that you, as a commissioner, couldn't take it up with the four B board during the following year, as those projects become funded.
And if I could add to that, we do have 1.5 million that is unallocated to any project, so can I always go back to the, to the four B and say, look, we'd like to consider part of that for drainage, and so that hasn't been allocated to any particular project. So there is, there is some possibility that they could still allocate funding towards drainage from that 1.5 million.
Louise, sorry to call you like out of the blue here. Do we have any projects in the works or in the canned for Fair Park area? Any designs already ready to go?
There's a, a study that was done by half associates for that northwest area of Harlingen, which I believe was published in the city's website. There's, yeah, it's a long report, but there's basically three recommendations, and, and they all involve a, a regional pond, and, and drainage storm systems to it, which are costly, so.
Do we have any land in that area already?
Yeah, there is a vegetated area there, which is adjacent to the street.
To Lazo.
Exactly, yeah.
Oh, right behind the Cotton Gin.
Right.
Lazo on T.
Yeah, it's a heavily wooded area, so we would have to clear out all that vegetation, all that brush, to, to actually make that happen.
And the report was completed recently, I'm talking months.
And that would tie in to, we were just, I believe we just approved last, last week, or excuse me, last meeting, drainage project there for Wichita, correct? Wichita or Wichita and T Street?
It was.
Right in that area, it's right on the Fair Park.
Yes, it's T, Teague and, and Fair Park.
T.
I'm sorry, yes, T.
T, yeah. And that would not connect to this proposed retention pond?
No, right now, nothing connects to that retention pond, because it hasn't been built yet. It's a, it's a possibility.
I'm not gonna say no to free money, Frank, so. If you're gonna give me $4 million, I'll take $4 million for drainage in my district.
Here's, hear me out first, okay? Gabe, you and I, and we met with the EDCA board a while back, and with District Drainage District Number Five. And the whole thing was, use one of those canals all the way through, okay? And a lot of those funds were gonna come in from Drainage District Number Five. So my number one concern is, I wanna make sure that we start working on our flooding issues before we proceed. And this kinda caught me off guard, which is obviously, that's why I'm asking this 48 hours after we had that, that meeting on Monday.
We did.
So the thing is, if the city's gonna drop a bunch of money for a detention pond, before we do that, let's make sure that we have our ducks in a row with Drainage District Number Five, because they're already working on this project, and it wasn't half, it's a, a CSE that's, that's, that proposed that.
Okay, DD Number Five is not working on this particular retention pond that Louise just spoke about, but we are working with them on other drainage projects. There's a big one that we, we agreed to partner with them. They've asked for about a 1.5 million dollars from the county in ARPA funding, and we, the city has agreed to commit 100,000 from our ARPA funding to get a bottleneck or released across B77. So that's gonna help.
This is the one by Spanish Acres?
Yes, I believe so. So we are working with them in other projects. This one, though, like Louise mentioned, is just relatively new. We haven't asked them for any type of assistance, because this would be a city-owned retention pond, so they probably wouldn't be able to help. So this would probably have to be all our money or grant money.
And Commissioner, this is not set in stone. This is just the, just the budget, and as you mentioned, the stuff of the golf course, like what we learned in the meeting, and we've been hearing for some time, that may not even happen because of inflation and, and all of the rise in cost and stuff. As much as we'd like to, it's way over budgeted cost. And I think another thing in there was the adaptive park that we talked about. I think that's important for children with disabilities, and, and so I think there are some things in there that, that are crucial, that I think that our community needs, but there's room to, to, you know, to work with what we have here. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's, you know, set in stone. Is there any other discussion? Did you have anything else to offer? I'm sorry.
No, that's it, thank you, Mayor.
Just let me add, I do not want to forget, I don't want anybody to forget, we have some major flooding issues. And that's the number one concern, okay? So this might have taken a little bit of too much time, but I want everybody to know, we have some major flooding issues, and I'm not forgetting. And I expect everybody to remind me just in case I don't, or if I do forget. And I know I've gotten the call for it.
Consider it forgotten. We got you back. We got you. And drainage, and you're absolutely right, Commissioner Morales, drainage is our number one issue. As you and I have discussed, I strongly believe Drainage District Two has the worst flooding. And so thank you for finding us $4 million to play with. I gladly take it. And Gabe, make sure.
Commissioner, 1.5 million.
What?
1.5 million.
I'll take that too.
That 2.9 is still allocated to that, we'd have to go back and, and just, just so you know, any, any project we fund would require a 60-day notice to the public. We'd have to go through the whole process of allocating money towards that particular project. It's not gonna be an issue, it's just, we just have to follow some steps to get it done.
Perfect. Louise, if you can start working on what can we do with that retention pond in that area that we need it. All right? Thank you, sir.
And just, you know, it goes without saying, everyone on this commission is, is committed and, and knows that we have issues when it comes to drainage and flooding, and everyone here is 100% committed. I know Commissioner Bettes and I drove around with Drainage District Number Five just earlier this week to, to look at things that are going on and, and the work that they are doing as well. So that, like I said, goes without saying, and we're not gonna, we're, that's not something we're gonna forget, we'll prioritize, prioritize it now, and we will prioritize it going forward. Having said that, do we have a motion now?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So I'm going to take things a little out of order, I apologize to everyone here, but given that some of the items that we have on the agenda, we also have in executive session, and in order to be able to, to act on those items, we would need to first go into executive session. So I'd ask the board if there's a motion to go in executive session, so we can do that.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll be right back, not right back, as soon as possible. Time is now 6:13, and we are going into executive session.
Thank you for your patience, ladies and gentlemen. It is, time is now 7:44, and we are back from executive session. Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we proceed as discussed on A, on 14A, C, and D.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we need a second?
We had a second from.
Second.
Okay, and opposed? Motion passes. So now we're gonna go back to. Item number four, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on the second and final reading adopting the City of Harlingen's annual budget for fiscal year 2023 by record vote.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. This is the second reading of the City of Harlingen's budget for fiscal year 2023, and normally it is in, in the consent agenda, but because we do require a record vote, we do have it out.
Okay, so we need each individual vote, is that correct? If we can start with Commissioner Kinsley?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Mesmer?
Aye.
Morales?
Yes, with the reservations that we verify the need of our big-ticket items.
Aye.
So passes?
Yes.
All right, and moving on to item number five, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution ratifying the property tax reflected in the adopted budget for fiscal year 2023.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is required by Local Government Code 102.007C, which requires us to pass a resolution ratifying the tax rate into the budget.
And you don't need an individual?
No, this one is just a.
So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Item number six, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on second and final reading adopting the tax year 2023 ad valorem tax rate for maintenance and operation together with interest and sinking rate for fiscal year 2023 by record vote.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this does also require a, a record vote for the tax rate for 2022, 2023.
Wonderful. So before we do that, just briefly, I, I wanted to just make a few comments. In researching tax rates across the Rio Grande Valley and listening to the citizens when they came to voice their concerns, I just wanted to, to point out that I have looked across the Rio Grande Valley, and the City of Harlingen has, will be adopting a lower tax rate from Brownsville, Edinburgh, Farr, Westaco, San Juan, San Benito, Donna, and Mercedes, and several other cities that I haven't mentioned here. In addition to that, I have found no city in the city, in the Rio Grande Valley that is in same population as the City of Harlingen to have adopted the no new revenue rate. I think that this is significant because it shows that across the Rio Grande Valley, everyone is struggling with, with inflation.
Right.
And at this point, it'd be impossible for a city to adopt the no new revenue rate and continue to pay our employees, to, to, you know, pay our electricity bills, to pay health insurance, and, and things that were definitely out of control for all municipal governments. And so Harlingen is not isolated in, in, in adopting the tax rate that we have adopt, or we intend to adopt. In addition to that, looking at the history of Harlingen, it appears that in 2005, our tax rate was 0.590559, and it is proposed to be adopted at .606357. It's really a penny difference from 2005, and here we are in 2022 with inflation, with people having these issues. We talked about people having problems with, you know, lines of food and, and trying to be able to just put food on the table, and thankful to the City of Harlingen that has done, has had this food pantry for years, and not just this month or, or last month or, and so I think that the City of Harlingen is doing its best to take care of its citizens, and I'm proud of this commission for taking that into consideration and balancing the budget, and ensuring that we are not spending, you know, there's no wasteful spending, and that we really, really cut as much as we can to get to where we are. And I hope that the, the citizens of Harlingen can be just as proud as I am of the commission for doing the work that they've done, and city staff, and the city management, of course, as well. With that, I don't know if anyone has any other comments. Okay, so we can do the vote starting with.
Yes.
Kinsley.
Yes.
Aye.
Morales?
They on the, on number one, we're taking this in, by numbers, right? The MO and then the sinking and interest and sinking rate, correct?
No.
Mayor, can I, can I just say, on, it does have to follow the, the script on, on, on the individual MNO and the INS.
Okay.
If we could just do, do that over with that script.
Okay, so then we need to do it twice?
Yes, three times, one for the MNO, the INS, and then the. Yes, three times, one for the MNO, the INS, and then the, the entire property tax rate.
Okay, my, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay, and so can you repeat that, Morales? I'm sorry.
Okay, nay on, uh, to maintain the operations fix rate at point five one two seven two nine per hundred.
Commissioner Bettis?
Aye.
Okay, and so now the INS?
Yes, the interest and sinking.
Okay. Commissioner?
Aye.
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 Mike?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then the, the, the property tax rate increased by adoption of a rate of point six zero six three five seven per one hundred dollar value?
Yes. Aye.
Commissioner?
Nay.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay. Item number seven. Consideration and possible action to award a contract for the reconstruction of the two homes on behalf of low to moderate income households located at nine one one West Fillmore Street and six fourteen East Madison Avenue to the lowest responsible bidder, Rail Transport LLC.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Sandy Alvarez, Community Development Director. I'm coming before you with consideration to award a contract for the reconstruction of two homes. These are for low income people in the community, nine eleven West Fillmore and six fourteen East Madison Avenue. The Community Development Department provides this service in the form of deferred forgivable loan utilizing CDBG funds. This program is designed to execute the demolition of dilapidated or substandard owner occupied housing units and construct new homes on the same footprint. On behalf of the homeowners, we went out for bids. We partnered with Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District's Architectural and Design Class to draw the house plans and the site plans for both of these homes. We did have to pay for the windstorm engineering plans, however. A notice to bidder was, bidders was published in the Valley Morning Star on August twenty-first and the twenty-eighth. It was also posted on the city's website and the City of Harlingen's Facebook page. The notice was sent via email to over fifty construction companies on our bid list, in addition to the publications and postings. Sixteen companies requested a bid packet over email, of which two companies responded to the call for bids. Our department is requesting authorization to provide assistance to the homeowners for the reconstruction of these two homes. Attached is a bid tabulation that was established during the bid opening. We got two bids. One of them was from DSW Homes. As you can see, the bids are, there's a big difference on the amounts. Our guess is that DSW Homes is from Friendswood, Texas. They're not local. Rail Transport was the lowest bidder. They are local and we have worked with them in the past. We do feel that those numbers are a little low considering what the home construction market is doing currently, but that's what the bids came in at. We did notice a little bit of a discrepancy on the homes. One of them is a two bedroom, two bath, and the other one is a four bedroom, two bath. The square footage, the price per square footage for the two bedroom is actually a hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-three cents per square foot. And the four bedroom is a hundred and five dollars and forty cents per square foot. So we did ask the contractor the reason for that. And he mentioned that the smaller home is actually on a twenty-five foot lot, so it's a lot harder to access for the demolition of the existing home and for the construction. So that's why they're bidding that one a little higher. These families, for the two bedroom, it is an elderly couple. We're offering, like I said, a deferred forgivable loan for them. The demolition is costing eleven thousand two sixty if we go for the lowest bidder, and the construction is a hundred and twenty-two thousand nine fifty. For the four bedroom, it is twelve thousand eight hundred for demo and a hundred and twenty-four thousand three eighty for construction. And the four bedroom is actually a six, a family of six, very low income household. And that's what I have. If y'all have any questions.
And you're recommending approval to, it's Rail Transport?
Yes, we're recommending approval to award the bid to Rail Transport.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number eight. Public hearing to consider in ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter one oh nine subdivisions, Article nine, updating the subdivision development guide, Section one oh nine to two fifty, adoption of infrastructure standards by amending the stormwater design requirements, adjusting the, the requirements for testing, and updating the standards for curb and gutters. City of Harlingen.
Mayor, City Commissioners, good evening. As you know, we had a public meeting on August twenty-ninth. I think most of you were, were there, where we got a lot of feedback from developers and subdivision engineers on issues to, to try to make the subdivision process more efficient. Some of the issues that were brought up pertain to the subdivision ordinance and some pertain to the subdivision development guide. The subdivision development guide is an extension of the subdivision ordinance and it deals with the infrastructure standards, drainage requirements, and several other technical requirements for, for new subdivisions coming in. The first subdivision guide was adopted on October seventh, twenty twenty, and it was amended in April sixth of this year. The first major change is on the testing requirements for drainage and streets. They've been adjusted while not compromising in ensuring that the city is accepting quality infrastructure. So that's Appendix B. So for this, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. So it's a, it's a good change for the city and for the developers.
Javier, you're reducing the number of tests that are required in this section, correct?
Correct. They're being reduced. But we're, but not compromising on, on getting quality infrastructure.
Are we also taking the extra step to where are we, is a developer going to have to wait for the inspector to show up? Or can they do, do the test and take it to, to be verified?
I know we're getting a, a second inspector for engineering, but I think that the testing is still done by private companies, but we require a city inspector to be there.
When they do the test?
Yeah. But we are getting a second inspector for engineering to improve the process for testing. Yes.
Wouldn't it be better to, for these companies to go in there, do the test, instead of having the, the inspector see that they're pulling out the concrete and make sure it's being tested properly? Wouldn't it expedite it?
I, I defer to, to the city engineer to, to respond, to respond to that.
Ideally, you would want the inspector there. By variance, we could say we will accept the picture with the date and time showing the results of the test, whether it's a density test, a concrete cylinder. But that picture has to be documented properly. That, that's my opinion. But like I said, ideally, you would want the inspector there so that it's done properly and at, at the same rate and, yeah, at the same, at the proper rate that the testing schedule requires.
Okay, I understand that. I guess my, my, my question, my debate on this one is this. The developer shouldn't be there waiting hours for the inspector to show up, okay? And I do realize you have different developers or contractors that do a real good job and those by yourself and the inspectors, they know that they're, they have the integrity to do the right, to do the testing correctly. Do you see where I'm coming from? So the, the thing that I don't want is the developers or the test people to be waiting for the inspector. Yes, I do realize there's going to be a second one, okay? But we need to find a way to curb that to where, if they wait an hour, that's no problem. If, if they're waiting three hours or four hours for the inspector because they got delayed and there's so much work, now we, now it's a ka-ching, ka-ching, and somebody losing money.
I think this is a living document, once again, that's, that's why, and I think that if that proves to be a problem, I mean, it could easily be revisited, right?
Correct.
The workshop?
That's correct, and.
I'd say we give a shot.
I guess for the record, the.
I'm with you.
The, the developers are struggling to schedule a meeting with the inspectors. Not that the inspector is late to the meeting. Having two inspectors would help that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And I think it, I mean, these, these meetings that we're having, it's not, we're not, it wasn't just a one and done. We'll continue to, to meet with developers and see how we can improve and, and making sure that as we move along, like Commissioner Ford mentioned, that if we need to make adjustments and changes, then we can do so. But this is a step in the right direction, having an additional person. Hopefully that alleviates it and, and then we will be receptive to that feedback should we need to change it. Because those are, those are important points, and I know that, that was a cause for concern, what Morales just brought up at, at that meeting. But hopefully we can fix that, and that was the point, right, of hiring this other individual to help.
Yes. That second inspector can, can help also in the final inspections for commercial developments and, and so on.
Wonderful. Okay.
The standards, also the major change is the standards for curb and gutters have been clarified. There used to be two exhibits that were causing confusion, so the bad exhibit has been removed and the good exhibit has been improved. So Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval to this major change.
And this was also something that was brought up in the meeting, correct?
Correct. In regards to, also in regards to curb and gutter, the use of fiber reinforced concrete in lieu of reinforced steel is, is acceptable with this new guide. The fibers, the use of fibers must meet Textat Item five to nine and Departmental Material specification four five five zero, fibers for concrete. So that's an additional change that will help with the process and PNC recommended approval to this. And the last major change that came up from, from the meeting is to, to allow the widening of ditches. If, if a new subdivision is next, is adjacent to a, a drainage, to allow the widening of the ditch to come, help the developer comply with the subdivision requirements, the drainage requirements. On this case, on this major change, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial by a four to one vote. With this mitigation option removed, developers who wish to propose this mitigation measure can pursue a variance. As for the subdivision ordinance, all variances must be approved by the city commission. So that's the one aspect from the meeting that Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial by a four to one vote.
I want to make sure that I understand this one here. So, so the, the planning and zoning board denied the, the widening of the ditch?
Yes, so it will only be onsite, it will have to be onsite detention always unless a variance is approved by this, by, by you all. So it was, it could still be done, the widening of the ditch, but they will have to apply for a variance. The variance will go before the Planning and Zoning Commission and then it will go before, before you.
I guess what I'm looking at is red tape, red tape, more red tape.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
And, and, and that's something I, I'm not, I'm sorry, but I do realize that some of the people on the planning and zoning are pretty sharp, okay? But I'm just trying to be practical here, all right? And, and if, I'm going to assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if you're going to widen a ditch, you're going to find out who the owner of that ditch is, and then you're going to request the permission or get it in writing to make sure you can do that before you do anything else.
Correct.
And this way, you, we can alleviate that, that detention pond.
Correct.
And then after that, the next question is, if that were to happen, we're going to go through the red tape and issue a variance and then build a retention pond, who's going to be in charge of that, of keeping up of, be in charge of maintaining that retention pond?
Exactly.
That's going to be the city, isn't it?
Well, right, so right now, we're, we're getting these detention ponds for the past year or two. So sometimes the, the developer will set up an HOA. So in the plot, it says this detention area to be owned and maintained by the HOA. But sometimes the developer will not want to do that. So in those cases, the city will own and maintain the, those detention areas.
So Javier, from what I understand, I know that the planning and zoning has, has decided against this, but it's before the commission, so that way we can consider it. Is that right?
You could, so this came from the public meeting and you could, so we had, we put it in the guide and you could, even though Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial, you could keep it if you, if you want to.
The answer to your question, Mayor, is yes.
Yes, okay, so what I, I think that, thank you, yes.
Sorry.
Time, Javier. So, so, so what I think, right, and, and the commission can, can chime in here. I really think that we need to have confidence, and I do, in our city engineer to, to be making these decisions for us. Because that's why we, we hired him and has, you know, the, the knowledge to be able to do that. Once that happens, then depending on the project, sometimes a detention pond is, is going to be ideal and the only thing that can, that can, can ensure that they're meeting the standards, right? And then sometimes you don't need that because there's the ditch and you can widen the ditch. And then if it's Drainage District Number Five, they make those arrangements with Drainage District Number Five to ensure that, that they can. Because sometimes you'll have a ditch and even though it's there, maybe it's not conducive to doing that and you may still need a detention pond. But that's where Luis will, will be able to tell whether you can or you can't and to make sure that we're building responsibly. So ultimately, we don't have flooding, right? And in addition to that, there may be other options to ensure that, that there is, we're meeting those, those standards. But those are going to come from, from Luis. So I'd like to see that developers have these alternative means to, to meet our, our, our high requirements and those expectations, but that they are given this flexibility. Because if there is a ditch and it, and it will serve that purpose and, and Luis signs off on it, then I think that it's the right thing, the right thing to do for all parties. I don't think a detention pond is, is the right thing in all cases, but in some cases, it may be the only way to do that. And I think having that discretion and, and empowering Luis to make those decisions, then going before the P and Z. And then once, if, if there is a deviation from the detention pond to the ditch, then those, once the planning and zoning votes on that, then I'd like that to come to the commission so we could see that, so that way we're, we're having that oversight that, to make sure that it's, it's done. And that, and they have that other line of, of defense. Because after speaking with some of, some of the developers, they have mentioned that, you know, if it dies at planning and zoning, then that's it, you know? And, and, and that's probably not the best practice. It should come to the commission just in case, so that way we have more clarification and we can ask Luis the, the proper questions, ask you and, and kind of discuss this to have a, sort of like an appeals process, right? Which we do in other things for the commission. So I think that that is a good compromise for, for all parties.
I agree.
I see you win, winning at me.
I missed, I don't know. When do you want them to come before the commission?
So if there are, if, if they're not going to do the detention pond and they're going to widen the ditch, they're going to widen the ditch to, to ensure, because it's adjacent or nearby, and then they go before planning and zoning and say, planning and zoning says, no, you can't, you're not going to widen the ditch, you're going to use a detention pond. And they can, the planning and zoning can make their recommendation, but it ultimately will come before the commission.
Why wouldn't you want that also go before Luis and let Luis make the decision?
Because we need to.
He is making the decision initially, and then it goes to planning and zoning, correct? So that, that's the issue. That's, that, I think that's the, the problem that the developers are having.
I, I agree with this because I, there has to be some type of oversight. Because right now, we're lucky.
now, we're lucky, because we have a great engineer in Luis, but I know before you guys' time, when we were here in the beginning, that wasn't always the case, so I think this extra step, where it would have to come to us, and we're talking specifically about this, about the widening of the ditch, because I agree that, no, there's nothing that, there's no one size fits all, you have to have that flexibility, I agree with that, but at the same time, I think we still need to have some, some kind of oversight, so anything that has to do with widening of a ditch, then do they have the option? Yeah, they have the option, but it ultimately comes to us, so that way we will make the final decision with us over here, and yes, Luis will still have an input now, and his, of course, his recommendation is, holds a lot of water, obviously, but I'm thinking more in the future, because we haven't always had the same quality as we do right now with Luis, and I've seen that in the past, and I would prefer to have that oversight, where we can say, okay, you know, maybe this is not a good idea, I want us to have the final decision.
But that's a failure on the city manager, not saying you, Gabe, all right, obviously this predates you, my friend, but, and if you have a bad engineer, that's a failure on administration and this commission, right, that's where the correction needs to be made, we don't need to be having things come before us, the thing is, we want to be a pro-development city, and we don't want to be throwing up more and more like hurdles in front of our developers on this stuff.
I would actually disagree with you on that, because in some other cities, a lot, the P and Z actually takes care of a lot of the stuff that actually in other cities comes to the actual commission, it was just recently, I gave, it told me that before, almost, a lot of things used to come to us before, right, to the, to the commission.
What, some of the plats would come to you, but now none of them do unless there's a variance request.
Yeah, so we actually get like a very few of them, so we've actually eliminated a lot of the red tape that you're mentioning, but at the same time, I agree with the red tape, I'm very pro-development, but I think we need some type of oversight, and is it a failure of management, or whatever, but things, we can predict the future, so I would prefer to have some type of oversight when it comes to this, because, I mean, it's like Norma said, it's a compromise, because doing it the other way that it's right there, what the, what the, what the P and Z wants, is basically, oh, it's not allowed whatsoever, okay, unless they do a variance, and then variances, you know, they're, from my understanding, what I was told, variances are rarely ever approved, this way, they're still an option, like Norma said, it's an appeal, they come to us, it automatically comes to us, we make the decision, and probably, you're right, probably more, more, like probably about nine out of 10 times, we're probably going to be agreeing with Luis, but I'm worried about that one time, because this issue has to do with the drainage, and I know, especially in my district, in District Five, we have a lot of these drainage ditches, and it affects my, my district a lot, and anything I can do to help with that, add another layer of oversight to prevent any more flooding in my district, I want to do that, and at the same time, if it comes to us, we can, we, say for example, again, say for example, we can foresee the future, but say in the future, Luis is no longer here, we have another engineer that approves the widening of the ditch when they shouldn't have in that specific area, now who are the people going to hold accountable, if they go to the commission, the commission, oh, it never came to us, it didn't come to us, but now, anytime this happens, this is going to come to us, and who can the people say when their flood's home? Hey, it was my commissioner, it was my commissioner, in other words, it's holding us accountable too for drainage, and I like that, if there's something that's going on under my watch, I want to have had a say in it and said, you know what, I'm taking responsibility for it, so something like that, I want responsibility for it, I don't want to give it off to somebody else, because when it boils down to it, they're going to contact me, and I don't want to have to tell my constituent that, oh, well, I didn't really see that, it never came to us, I want to say it came to us, and I voted against it, or I voted for it.
None of us are engineers, right, like, why should we be substituting our knowledge and trying to second guess Luis, or second guess?
We're not, we're not second guessing, because what we're doing is, we're taking into consideration, but it also gives us another opportunity for a lot of people to mobilize and come and give public comment and stuff like that, and I like that, this is more of a public forum, because more people actually watch the city commission meetings, and more people will actually come and participate in the city commission meetings than they would actually do in the P and Z, so again, I, this is, for me, this is a compromise, because ideally, initially, I was totally against this, this, this little, I was, I agreed with the P and Z initially, but then I went with Norma, and I also went with Rolando from the Drain, Kymara Company Drainage District, and also with one of the developers, Dustin Moore, and we went around, he explained his point of view, because I've always had the other side, I went to the, got his side too, came in the middle, I said, you know what, this is a good compromise, because we are giving them flexibility they're asking for, but at the same time, we're still having a little bit of oversight, and I think oversight is extremely important, and I'm not saying we're engineers, because obviously we're not, but that's what, that's what he's here for, he's here to give us answers to questions that we may have to an issue that might not have come to us either way.
So, let me just before, because I think maybe this will answer some of your concerns, I am of the opinion that Luis's, you know, opinion and his recommendations are gold, right, that's, that's why we hire him, and hopefully Luis stays for a very long time, and that, that's okay, and if not, then if there's another, and the same thing, you know, we have to have confidence in our, in our staff, right, however, talking to developers, they, to me, I heard they want it to come to the commission, because it doesn't end with Luis, it ends with P and Z, so what happens is, Luis may say, yes, widen the ditch, and then it goes to P and Z, and they say, no, do a detention pond, and then, and then, and then they're done, they have no other, that next step, and so by doing this, if they say no at the P and Z, who are also not all engineers and they're volunteers, they come to us, and we can ask Luis, well, what happened here, you recommended to do this, and now they're kind of saying, no, they're not going with your recommendation, this is basically last line of defense for developers, and that's why I'm, I'm for it. By no means am I saying we're making those decisions, and we want to override Luis's, we just want to give him the support that he needs, because he may not be getting it at the P and Z.
Kills two birds with one stone.
Do you see what I'm saying?
I get it, I get your argument, I understand your argument.
Because it's not, it's, if it was, Luis signs off on it, and we're done, then I'd agree with you, because, you know, I know Commissioner Perez, and I.
I was there, I mean, that's, he made his point, and they've got overruled, so I mean, coming here, I think is a.
Right, and that's what they, from what I understand, that's what developers want, and we want to make, be developer friendly, we want to make them, because we don't want it to be, because we'll never know about it, what happens is, I mean, I don't attend, I mean, I don't think I've attended any of the P and Z meetings, actually, I don't think I've attended a lot, but, you know, in person, and what happens is, that's what happens, and then they have to go back to the drawing board, and even though that, you know, they've already built, you know, decided they're going to go this route, and they have Luis's approval, but then they're shut down.
That's what I was going to say, why don't we just cut out the P and Z?
Oh.
I'm saying, cut it out.
I didn't hear that part.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't know what you do.
If we give it to Luis, and Luis gets, if we're going to follow him nine out of 10 times, again, that's, we're going to Hall of Fame if we're batting 900.
I would, I wouldn't support that, I still want us to have the final say.
Yeah, that's what I say, how long does it take, Luis, once you do it, right, like whenever you make your recommendation, for it to then go to P and Z, and then for a variance meeting, how long does it that take, that time program?
No variance.
Luis signing off to us?
No variance.
With, if there would be a variance, how long?
We're not talking about variance, I don't think, right?
To appeal, then to us, that's what I'm saying.
No, 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 so we're scratching variance, we're no variance on the table at all, right? Is this what we're saying?
Mayor, this has to be a variance.
Correct.
Because if, if the P and Z denies it, there wouldn't be any type of format for the developer to get here, if that's what you want to do.
That's what I'm trying to say, why can't it, why can't, why does it have to be a variance, why can't it be, these are your alternate, your alternate methods of meeting these requirements, whether it's a detention pond, or it's a widening of the ditch, or some other, you know, creative method, as long as you meet those, those requirements, and then it goes to the P and Z, and then it comes to us after, why is it there, why is there a need for variance?
If that language stays, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a variance, because that option is there.
No, I realize that, but if it's not a variance, and the P and Z denies it, can the commission still hear that?
Well, if, by state law, if they comply with the ordinance, because it'll be an option.
Correct.
By state law, it has to be approved, because they're complying with the ordinance, and that's, that's in the street.
No, I think, Javier, the question is, if the P and Z considers that request, and they don't approve the widening of the ditch, and it's not a variance, but it's denied by the P and Z, what happens then?
Well, the thing is, if that is there, and they're complying, they're complying with the ordinance, they're supposed to approve it, because they're complying with the ordinance, that language is there.
But what if we change the language where it would have to come to us, like on that?
So additional language could be added to that, to say, under this option, it has to be approved by the city commission.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for, that's all I want.
Instead of having, because I agree with Commissioner Lopez, we don't want, I don't want for them to have to take that extra step and prolong the process by getting a variance, from my understanding was that we could have, the ordinance reads that these are your, these are your alternative methods, Luis decides which one is the right way to go, after, you know.
Or you could say, the additional language could be, if P and Z, if denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the city commission can approve it.
And in reality, are there actually that many that do the widening of the ditches?
No.
See, so this is not something that would like affect all the developers, this is only like a few instances, but I would rather take care, what, I'm sorry?
You have to be adjacent to a drainage.
Exactly, so I would rather take care of those few, and, because I want to take care of those few, there's not going to be a big thing, it's not going to be a big, you know, red tape or anything for developers, just for the few that are asking for this, and they come to us, and we listen to what Luis says, and we approve it, or we disapprove it, doesn't matter, but the point is, we take responsibility for it.
If it's supposed to have passed by law, then why does it even go to the P and Z? If they've complied with everything?
So if that is added, right, so that's an option, right, so if the city engineer approves it, it's, they're complying with the ordinance, and P and Z is supposed to approve it.
What I'm proposing is to add language to it for it to come to us.
By state law.
Because.
But that's, that's not what always happens, if the city engineer approves it, the planning and zoning has changed that recommendation in the past, and that's been a problem, so that's, that's where we get into, that's why we're here, because sometimes the city engineer has approved that, and the planning and zoning does not approve his recommendation.
Right.
They make a change, and that's why the developers were upset, because that doesn't always happen.
And from what I heard from developers, that it's not, P and Z is not the final, you know, say-so in other, in other cities, that Harlingen is unique, and that P and Z gets to shut them down instead of going before the commission, so that is the reason why I feel like this is more the norm, and, you know, making this change, and right now, we're the exception, where the planning and zoning is like the deciding, deciding factor, we just want to make it easier, but we want to make sure that, you know, it's, we're being responsible, and leaning on Luis, and, and pretty much, for lack of a better term, having his back and making sure that things are moving as quickly as possible, because he's already made that recommendation, so I.
If we want to have his back, then we cut out P and Z and let him make the final decision.
There's no oversight there.
We do have oversight, literally, Gabe is the oversight to have.
It doesn't work that way, dude, it doesn't work that way, trust me, I fought this battle in the beginning, where we're having, that's why we have the flooding issues that we have in a lot of the subdivisions, because previously, that's what we did, we were giving, we were, they were allowing anything to go in, and it was, it turned out to this mess, I mean, look, you're, you're, on your town hall, you had a lot of people complaining about flooding and all that stuff, sure enough, it's not that many subdivisions, but in my, in my area, there's subdivisions that are being built, I know, well, I don't know, but also in District Three, but the thing is, it's, what you're saying is ideal, in an ideal world, when everything works perfectly, you're absolutely right, but from my experience, and from what I've seen, and what I've had to do with, with, with some of these subdivisions, and the calls that I've gotten from some of these people, that have come and sat, stood right there and complained, and called me and said, hey, why didn't you do anything about this subdivision, because of this, all they did was widening the ditch, we have no detention, we're flooding and all that, and all I could tell them was like, you know what, it never came to me, I'm sorry, it never came to me, and then that's when I would call, I would look down to the P and Z, ask, hey, why didn't it come to us, because it doesn't have to come to you, it doesn't have to, and remember, these are not a lot of them, there's only a few of them that will actually come to us, but it gives oversight.
I think we're spending more time talking about it now than we will ever.
Exactly, 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 exactly.
I don't think that, I mean, the P and Z, I get it, it's not, what is the timeline, Javier, if somebody goes to the, to get to the P and Z and then to the commission?
It's normally a one week difference.
Yeah, I don't think it's a big delay.
And we're giving them the, I'm sorry, and like, as like Norma said, we're giving them the option, if it gets denied, it comes to us.
Well, and I think it gives a message to P and Z, too.
Yes, yes, exactly, I agree.
And we're having a second P and Z meeting.
Side with the engineer rather than with them, I think it, I think that broadcasts a tremendous message to them.
And P and Z is meeting twice a month now to accommodate subdivisions, because now they've got to get approved, when we accept them within 30 days, so.
Correct.
P and Z has, planning has to move pretty quick.
And we got to keep in mind, we're not, this isn't, wasn't an option before, and now it will be, so maybe we'll even have less people coming, coming to us, right?
Correct.
And again, it's something we can look at in future workshops, if it's not working out.
Agreed. So, is there any more talk?
Well, we have a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
So, any more questions for Javier? No, okay, so then, at this moment, we will open it up for a public hearing, do we have anyone here that is here to speak for or against the adoption of the ordinance as it's been proposed? Okay, having no one here to speak, we will close the public hearing, and, Mark?
In ordinance of the City of Harlingen, amending the code of ordinances, chapter 109 subdivisions, article nine, updating the subdivision development guide, section 109 250, adoption of infrastructure standards by amending the stormwater design requirements, adjusting the requirements for testing, and updating the standards for curbs and gutters, and providing a repealer clause.
Do we have, oh, I'm sorry, Mike, did you have a question? Commissioner, did you have a question?
No, I made a motion to approve.
Oh, okay.
I would like to add an amendment to that proposal, that we add the language necessary for it to come to us.
I think that's what he presented.
Oh, that's what you, with the amendment?
Yes, because it's going to be a variance, so it'll come, it'll have to come to the commission.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't accept that amendment.
Of course, I said it.
Okay.
There has to be a whole new motion, if he's the one that made the motion, then you second it.
Well, it's going to come to the commission, because staff presented it as it being a variance, and so if they want to widen the ditch, it goes to P and Z, they can either approve it or deny it, but in any event, it still has to come before the city commissioner for final approval.
So if we approve it this way, it's going to come to us no matter what?
Yes, only the widening.
Oh yeah, of course, only the widening of the ditch, that's it, okay, then I retract my amendment.
Okay, I have, I have a, I have a question. I have a question, I'm, maybe I'm confused, this is going to require a variance, Javier? So, so if, if, I thought that we just had this discussion, and since this is going to be part of the ordinance, that they no longer will need to go request a variance to request.
If the language stays, it will not be a variance.
Okay, so we're getting conflicted.
It's only, it's only if the language is removed.
Okay.
But wait a minute, if it stays the way you're suggesting, if the P and Z denies it, it won't come to the commission, correct?
Well, so if that language stays, and the city engineer approves it, by, is complying with the ordinance, so by state law, it's supposed to be approved by P and Z.
No, 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 that's not my question, my question is, is if the engineer approves it, it goes to P and Z, and they still deny it, what happens then?
We need to add, on the subdivision ordinance, we need to add an appeals process.
Okay, then, I would, that would be good.
So this, this, the way that you have it, needs to be changed, right, to reflect what it is, that we cannot adopt.
This is the subdivision development guide that deals with infrastructure requirements, this is an extension of the subdivision ordinance, so in the subdivision ordinance, we need to add an appeals process, so if we run into a situation like that, the developer will be able to appeal to the city commission.
Table it?
Yeah.
Bring it back.
Okay, I agree with that, we can table it.
Okay.
Motion to table?
Second.
Is this still on, though, does this still count, or no?
Is he still on?
Does this motion?
Yeah, because, yeah, because his motion is still count, because he made one first.
Nobody's having his motion, okay.
So the motion by Commissioner Mesmer died, there was no second, and then we have a, someone moved to table, it was Kinsley, and we got a second by Commissioner Lopez, and so we will table this and bring it back on the next meeting, and in the meantime, maybe we can clean up that language and give you time to speak with.
Add the appeal.
Yes, and just to be clear, I don't want there to be a variance, I don't want additional steps for the developers, we want to make this painless, and however you come up with that, I have confidence that you'll be able to do that.
We'll get it done.
Okay, so, moving on.
Mayor, unfortunately, I'm going to have to leave, because if I do not, I will not have a home to go to, so I have to leave, excuse me.
Thank you, Commissioner Perez. And we still have a quorum.
Do you have anybody for any board?
I'm sorry?
Do you have anybody for any board?
No, I don't.
Okay. And we'll move forward, and we still have a quorum, everyone else is present, with Commissioner Mes- And we'll move forward and we still have a quorum. Everyone else is present with Commissioner Mesmer on Zoom, right?
Did you vote on that last motion?
Did you ask for a voting? On the table, Lee?
Yes.
All those in favor to table?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, Ms. Moore.
Okay, that passes. Okay. Moving on to item number nine, consideration of possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Article 1, Section 20-3 of the City Code relating to adopting reasonable rules and regulations regarding outdoor burning and providing for a penalty for violation of the same.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. You have before you an ordinance adopting a process to allow outdoor burning in the city limits of Harlingen. In your packet, you have the ordinance and an application with the regulations needed in order for this to be allowed. I'm here to answer any questions and staff recommends approval.
I've been waiting for this to come before the commission. I don't have any questions. Does anyone else?
Nope.
Commissioner, do you have any questions? Mesmer?
Mike?
Okay. In that case, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Give a second. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And item number 10, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the Development Corporation of Harlingen budget for fiscal year 2022 to 2023. Adal?
Good evening. The budget is actually in your packet already, but I wanted to go over some of the highlights from the budget. Last week, September 14th, the board approved this budget. And what we're doing as far as the revenues is basically doing a 3% increase over this current fiscal year for sales tax growth. Right now, we're experiencing almost an 8% growth, so it's been a good year. But we're being a little bit more conservative as far as our projections for next year. Our growth in rents is going to be about 1.4%. We're going to expect our interest income to continue to grow as well. And we are going to have a significant transfer from our reserves. And we'll talk about why we're going to do that in just a second. The picture up on the screen is basically a 23-year growth pattern as far as sales tax goes. Obviously, it has been steadily increasing every year. There's been some ups and downs. That straight line is really a 2% growth rate. So right now, we're experiencing much better than that. We're on top of the curve of that line instead of on the bottom of that line. And we have been for the last few years, so overall, sales tax receipts have been very good. On our expenditures, talking about administrative expenses first, we budgeted almost half a million dollars more this year to cover some additional expenses. Some of it is personnel, $62,000 more, and some of it is more billboard marketing. But the largest is really for Project Organic, which is a project in and around the medical district. We'll hear more about that later. But we've put in $370,000 for economic studies. That's related to the TERZ, the TERZ Finance Plan, also some engineering, and also some design guidelines and some other land planning issues that we're wanting to address for that area. More on that later, but as we said before in some of the other budget discussions, this is a budget. It doesn't mean that we're going to expend it yet. It just means that we have the money available for that if and when that gets to be the reality. We have also increased funding for advertising and different media, an additional $150,000. If you thought we, you see us on TV, you see us, you hear us on the radio, you see KURV and a lot of digital ads and that type of thing, you're going to see more of that next year because we're increasing the funding quite a bit. And then we're also increasing the direct incentives to businesses and to projects themselves. This is where the significant increase in our revenues is coming from. We're taking about $3 million from our reserves and putting it into action. We've got 1.2 million set aside for Project Organic, which is building some detention, stormwater detention facility on part of the 30 acres that we own within the medical district, which will help spur more development in about a 70-acre tract. We're spending $840,000 in drainage and other infrastructure at the park at Roosevelt. So this is land that we own off of Roosevelt and Expressway. Again, it's not to benefit only our property, but the property around us. And that includes that subdivision, Lazy Palms subdivision out there. We're going to spend $600,000 at the industrial park, some of it for drainage, some of it for other additional infrastructure as well. And we're trying to leverage all of this monies that we're spending on our, from our budget with federal funding as well. There's another $600,000 that's set aside, not specific to any project or drainage, but it's got to fall within the project guidelines for the EDC, for the Taipei. So if we have a project within downtown that requires some drainage, we're going to have funding for that, at least some of it. We're setting aside half a million dollars for Project P. I think you guys talked about that in executive session. And we also have $150,000 set aside for facade improvement type of program for small businesses. The mayor and I talked about that, and we're going to try to set up some guidelines for that program within the next 30 to 60 days and then launch that before the end of the year. But...
I'm sorry. Going back to the drainage project over at the park at Roosevelt, is the $840,000 for just design or design and implementation, everything?
That's the seed money that's going to be, it's part of the cost for, not just for the design. It's also for actual construction. The actual project, which includes other infrastructure, is about four and a half million dollars. We're looking at taking some of our money to get the project started, but then supplement it with EDA funding and then financing some of the rest of it.
So when do you anticipate breaking ground on that project?
EDA projects are announced typically in November, so we're hoping that sometime in the first quarter after it's been designed. We have some preliminary designs already, but first quarter of next year.
Okay, so, thank you.
Okay. In addition to those expenditures, we're also setting aside $150,000 for two programs. One is the goal line assistance program, which we have done over the last two years to help TSTC students basically cross the goal line and finish school. This is grants that are given by the foundation to students who are less than three semesters away from graduating or from completing certificate. And we're setting aside $50,000, so that 150 for VIDA. VIDA has been helping students also make it through their studies so that they can contribute to the local economy. Most of the VIDA students aren't eligible for a lot of the federal funding, federal loan programs because they're not full-time students, because they're working. And so the board decided to set some money aside for that as well. Kaufman, right now, we have two classes every year. We're going to try to either double the size of those classes or double the frequency of the classes. And so we set some money aside for that. And we've set aside $150,000 for job training programs and high-demand occupation grants, which would be matching Texas Workforce Commission grants that are directed towards employers that are currently trying to make upskilling their employees. So that basically a summary, if you will, of the expenditures and the highlights in the budget. Conservative spending and fiscal responsibility by our boards over the last few years has brought us to the point to where we've accumulated over $9 million in cash. Three of that $9 million, we're going to be using this upcoming fiscal year. So we still have a fairly healthy cash balance. And when the big fish comes in, I think we've got enough toe line to bring them in. So that's my budget.
Great.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Adal, for all your great work. Item number 11. Consideration and possible action to approve an invoice in the amount of $81,403.17 from Cameron County Elections Department for election services related to the City of Harlingen May 7, 2022 general election.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. I'm Remy Garza, the Elections Administrator, and we presented this invoice to the city with respect to the May election. I guess the biggest elephant in the room is that the original estimate for the election was much closer to $50,000 than it was to $81,000. And at the time, we knew that when we added the two early voting sites, that there was going to be an increase in the overall cost of the election. And I'm struggling to remember if we adjusted the estimate in the contract at the time. I don't believe that we did. I think it was just that it was accepted. And so I'm here to answer any questions. But I think if you look at the invoice and you look at the estimate, you're going to see that the highest driver of cost is personnel when you, if you have a copy of the original estimate in front of you. Generally, the remainder of the expenses aren't necessarily out of line with what you would normally expect in an election. We knew that this being the first election that we conducted on behalf of the city, that we were going to be making some assumptions. Unfortunately, it appears that we made some serious misjudgments on how we were estimating the expenses. So I think that when you look at the agreement, it should be looked at the personnel section as being so much more than what was originally estimated for personnel.
Mesmer has a question. They, you said that we would be sharing, the cost would be low because we would be sharing with Harlingen School District. And did we in fact share the cost with the Harlingen School District?
Yes, you did. And the invoice that they received was for $74,000 of the overall.
So why is our bill more expensive than the school districts?
I think they benefited from having some of the, some of the precincts in the outer area that are outside the City of Harlingen. They were sharing cost with Combs, Primeta, and some of the other jurisdictions that were on there. So some polling locations that would have been divided by two in previous elections were being divided by three or four for them compared to the ones that were within the city.
Thank you. Appreciate your answer.
Remy?
And may I ask another question? This is of Amanda. Prior to the county taking over the election for $81,000, how much did it cost the city when you, you and the city personnel were running the election, ma'am?
It was a joint election with the schools, so we shared the cost. And the cost for the city was more or less around $25,000. But then again, we had less employees, I mean, workers. We had less polling places. And then in this election, in this May election, there was extended hours. And there was more hours for voting.
Okay, and what was your number prior?
Prior, around $25,000.
Okay, so we went up from $25,000 to $81,000. Let me ask you, Mr. Garza, are you going to give your poll people pay raises?
Well, I think the pay rate for the presiding judge is $15 an hour. For the alternate judge was $14 an hour, and for the clerks was $13 an hour.
Are you fining any for this stuff?
No, it's currently going to be held steady. We have had the Commissioners Court approve an additional $2 as incentive during this COVID period, but that has come from the county's percentage, from the county's ARPA funds.
Okay, thank you.
Remy, I do have one question. I was listening to Commissioner Mesmer's question. And I might be not, I might not be thinking of this correctly, but since the school district has a bigger jurisdiction than Harlingen, those additional sites, we wouldn't be at those sites? Is that right?
On Election Day, you, one of the other differences is that you all had ballots all across Cameron County for the citizens of Harlingen in all the early voting locations.
Okay.
And, but the precincts that are shared, that have both the school district and the city in, they might have more precincts than you all do because they go further out in different areas. But when they overlap another city or they overlap another jurisdiction, they're sharing that cost with them. So like a polling site in, you know, Combs, normally, they'd be paying more if it was just them and not Combs being part of their election. Because usually, they didn't have polling locations in Combs. They would have it at a location in the Harlingen, kind of closer to Harlingen. So there were some locations where they might not have been, they might not only have been sharing with themselves or just with you all, that they were sharing with other entities.
In the next election, because it's going to be in November and there'll be more elections, will the costs come down?
Yeah, it definitely should. And I think specifically because this, really, this May election and the June election were really what I feel I would call the last of my COVID elections, where we had a lot more personnel that were working the election in anticipation of an increase in the curbside voting. So we had a lot of, we had a lot of extra personnel in the, in the, the early voting locations as well as on Election Day. And we've already decided for November, reducing the number of people. We did try to work with the site supervisors and the judges to let people go early or go longer for lunch so that we could reduce the overall impact once we saw how the pattern of the turnout was going to be. But unfortunately, we weren't able to make full cuts that we would normally have. For example, polling locations that had eight workers, some will go down to six or some will go down to four. So we're really, I think that's, to me, that's the driver of this higher cost is that we were planning just in case we saw either some outbreak or something and people resorted to going to curbside voting. Curbside voting will always be part of the process, but it's just whether or not you need to have the extra personnel to dedicate to be having somebody taking, going back and forth between the vehicles and the polling location without impacting what was happening inside the polling location.
Got it. So we can look forward to reduced cost. The other, one other question I had was the convention center. And I don't know if you have those numbers, but it seemed like, because I was following the election, that not a lot of people showed up to vote at the convention center. Do we have a total number of how many people actually voted there? Because that might be a way to cut expense, to learn from this election, that maybe that's not the best poll insight.
I don't have the exact number, but I know I can probably hop online real quick and find out what that turnout was on our website. I don't know if somebody has access to the internet, they could look real quick on the county website because in the archived elections, that information is still there.
If you don't have it, it's okay. I mean, we can...
But I can assure you that it, no way did the participation or the use of the convention center justify its, the cost of that. But we didn't know.
Right.
And so I think while you're, you know, you want to provide access. You know, sometimes people have to get used to it. And maybe in the future, once they know it's there and it's there constantly, it might be a place that they'll go back to. But, you know, for this particular election, it just, it didn't have the same level of utilization as it did during the 2020 November election. Because that was, it was actually, I think, our third highest utilized location. Because people wanted to, needed the space. They preferred the space. But unfortunately for this election, it just didn't have the same appeal.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Was there any other questions? Okay, so, do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes.
I'm going to abstain from that one.
Correct.
Thank you all very much. We look forward to continuing our relationship and I will get better at my estimations.
Thank you. And Gabe, this is still okay, right, Mark, that Commissioner Bettis is not here and you have the three votes?
Yeah, we have enough votes for her.
Okay, wonderful. All right, moving along, board appointments. Do we have any board appointments?
For the Young Adult and Teen Advisory Board, I have Emily Appel.
For the Library Advisory Board, I have, be reappointing, Orel Rodriguez. And then for the Healthy Harlingen Advisory Board, June Elorimo.
June?
The running dude.
Oh, June.
Yeah.
I was told he's doing a great job, so I'm just kind of- He is.
He's a runner.
Never met him, so-
Clearly.
Please tell him I say hello.
And I apologize for Commissioner. Okay, I do have a couple of appointments. I have on the Harlingen Community Improvement Board, the 4B Board, I will be appointing Sergio Perez and Carla Aguilar. On the Tax Increment Finance Board, Sergio Perez. The Veteran Advisory Board, Dani Cantú. And Planning and Zoning Board, Francisco Solis.
Thank you for Mesmer, thank you.
For the Development Improvement Board, I got Dani Tescarino for that one.
The downtown, right?
Yes, downtown improvement board.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Posed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we have already taken up our executive session, so ladies and gentlemen, that is, that is our meeting. Thank you so much for joining us, and meeting is adjourned.